Okay, good evening. I'm going to call to order our board meeting for Tuesday, April 18th, 2023. We're going to enter into an exec session at, is it 7:11? 7:12? Yeah, that's good. 7:12. And we're going to discuss District Matter 2.1, Succession Planning, and two proposed executive sessions upon board approval. Can I have a motion? So moved. And second.
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you, and we'll see you shortly. We're going to call the meeting to order. Just note that Lori Kenner is not present. It's our meeting from Tuesday, April 18th, 2023. And we entered into executive session at 7:12. We discussed 2.1, District Matter, 2.2, Negotiations Matter, and 2.3, District Matter Legal. So can I ask everyone to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everybody. So we have, before I ask for a motion for tonight's agenda, we're going to just mention two amendments. We did amend the executive session, and we added 2.2 Negotiations Matter and 2.3 District Matter Legal. So can I get a motion for tonight's agenda to adopt it?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor? Okay, great. And can I have a motion to approve tonight's Consent Agenda, Item 6, 7, and 8, Consent Agenda Personnel, Consent Agenda Special Services, and Consent Agenda Business?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor? Okay. And then we're going to move on to our special report, adoption of the 2023-24 budget. Is that going to Kelly?
Yes, although I almost took over today. I did a lot of talking, I'm sorry, Kelly. I'm going to try to pitch it right now.
Only superintendent that knows more about the budget. There's not many more.
It's become a fun topic, which I don't know what that says about me. It's an interesting topic, right? And I think when people understand the budget process, it makes a lot of sense.
It's good to learn about.
It's good to learn.
Okay, so tonight's our budget adoption. And then in two weeks, on May 2nd, will be our budget hearing, the review of the final proposed budget. And then finally, our budget vote on May 16th, Tuesday, May 16th, at HCC from 6:30 to 9:00 p.m. Quickly, the review of the budget. It's an increase of 2.87%. Approximately $2.7 million increase from last year. $99.7 million total. I keep hitting this like it's going to change. This budget includes all current services and support of our students, all state and federally mandated programs, continues our fantastic athletic and extracurricular programs, and no change to our transportation services. Again, you've heard this once or twice. The district budget is made of three categories: program components, program, capital, and administrative. Program being 73.1%, capital being 15.1%, and administrative being 11.8%. Some further information on this, you can refer to the last two presentations where we have more detail of what these components entail. In terms of expenditures, 79% of our budget is salary and benefits of our staff. Any school district between 75% and 80% of their budget is their salary and benefits for their staff. 14% contractual services. It's essentially anything that we can't do in-house. We contract for it, it's 14%. Debt service, 2.6%. Supplies and equipment, 2.5%. And finally, maintenance projects at 1.7%.
And I was thinking upon perusing this slide, Kelly, about contractual services. And because we are a district that has our own bus fleet and our own bus drivers, in other districts, you might see that in contractual services as opposed to salary and benefits.
Absolutely. Excellent point. In terms of the revenue side, we only receive 5% state aid. That's pretty consistent in general in this area, although some districts in the last two years have received additional foundation aid. Unfortunately, we're not receiving that foundation aid. No, I did it again. Thank you, Tim. 5% state aid. The majority of our revenue comes from our property taxes, 88%. 2% from our pilots. We will have two pilots next year, Engel Berman and IBM. 4% from fund balance appropriations and reserves. And then finally, 1% of revenue from other revenue, which includes county sales tax and interest earnings.
Kelly, can you explain why we don't receive as much state aid? Why we didn't get as much foundation aid? It's perhaps one of our neighbors. Who seems like, it may seem like a similar school.
Yep. So, long story short, five or six years ago, Governor Patterson, there was a deficit in the state budget. And in order to make up that deficit, he, for lack of a better term, he removed funds, state aid funds, from school districts. And that's added up over five, six-year period. Byram Hills was never at the point where funds were removed from us. We were at, the formula didn't affect us as much because A, we only received 5% state aid, so it's a lower number. But we were fully funded in theory of the foundation aid, whereas other districts weren't. So we never lost anything to get back. These other districts had a deficit in the aid, and they're kind of getting it back. They're slowly getting it back these last three years. So you'll see some districts, your Mount Vernon's, your bigger school districts, $10 million, $11 million, $12 million. Even some of your smaller districts, like in Ardsley, getting about $3 million, $3 million in foundation aid, just based on the changes in formulas on a year-to-year basis. Again, Byram Hills didn't have those changes because we were never, the deficit never happened in foundation aid. We were really kind of consistent. But, you know, we are getting an increase in foundation aid just at the minimum amount, which is 3% on a yearly basis. So for us, that's about $60,000 per year additional foundation.
So we never have a deficit because of our wealth factor? Is that what it was at the end of the day? Because we got so little foundation aid that it was just a bare minimum that they continued to?
You know, with the state formula, there's 100 factors. So the state formula, so a large portion is the wealth ratio and assessed value changes on a year-to-year basis. We were pretty consistent, whereas other districts kind of went up and down. Enrollment, so enrollment, wealth ratio, assessed values, all those factors led to that.
We've talked about foundation aid, and there isn't a single human being who doesn't think the foundation aid needs to be revised. Even school districts that are receiving the back monies right now, they also recognize something that we do. For example, the regional cost index that is used for foundation aid is having us be considered with regions in upstate New York as opposed to regions around here like Long Island. Long Island has a much higher regional cost index. So that affects the amount of aid that you get. So in the meantime, I don't think it's costing us any less for goods and services in Westchester than it is in Long Island. We're paying the same overpriced inflation, but we're being scaled as if we were an upstate New York school. So it creates a disadvantage for us.
Okay, in terms of the numbers for the total revenues, again, an increase in the tax levy of 1.93%. About $1.6 million increase levy to levy from prior year. A decrease in pilots of 7%. Again, this is Engel Berman, and then the projected decrease from IBM for next year. Other revenues, an increase of 14%. Again, county sales tax has been consistent in the last couple of years in terms of what we're receiving. And then the interest earnings that we're going to receive this year and next year have increased that 14%. State aid, an increase of 14% as well. That was really due to a change in our transportation aid. That, basically, our reimbursement rate changed in transportation based on the enrollment increase in that in the last couple of years. So we're getting a little more transportation aid. That's the majority of that increase. And then finally, fund balance and reserves, an increase of 16%. In terms of the tax rates per 1,000 of assessed value, town of North Castle, which is 86% of our properties, taxpayers, it's a 2.61% increase. Newcastle and Bedford, which is about 82 properties, or 84 properties total, 1% of our total population, 2.82% for Newcastle and an 8.34% for Bedford. Keep in mind, you may have a Bedford address, but it may still be in the town of North Castle. I do get that question also a lot. And then finally, a decrease at Mount Pleasant of 3.78%. Just an idea, in terms of historical tax rates, you can see it can significantly change on a year-to-year basis. You know, a great example is Bedford from 1516, where it was a 12.18% increase in 1516, and then it decreased 4.46%. So you can see there's really a shift, a difference in rate per year. And this really is a factor of assessed value. The district has no control over assessed value. It's prepared by the town assessors in each of our four towns. And those changes in assessed value, again, really changed and shift the amount of tax levy each town is responsible for. I'd encourage you to go back to the March 28th board presentation that goes a little more detail of how that shift causes the change in tax rate on a year-to-year basis. Okay, so for next year, again, as I said, the tax rates increase here on the right here. And just as a reference, you can see our increases in tax levies at the bottom here. You know, the last four years have been 1%, below 2% and 1% in 2021 and 2022. Really see those changes in tax rate percentages on a year-to-year basis, based on 1% for these following two years. Our true tax rate, again, this is, you may recall this from a previous presentation. Essentially, as you're picking up your house, you're putting it in another district. It's a way to compare your district to other districts in terms of your tax rate, how much you're paying per taxes. So this is a place where you want to be at the bottom. And fortunately, we are at that point. Again, it's, as I said before, a lot of districts aren't submitting their data, so this slide is kind of dying out, unfortunately. But we are in a good place, and we continue to be probably going forward as well. And then finally, tax rate increase, 1.93%. In summary, budget-to-budget increase of 2.87% and a final budget proposed of 99, 725,037. And again, our final budget hearing, budget hearing five is on May 2nd, and then the budget vote on May 16th at HCC from 6:30 to 9:00 p.m.
Thank you, Kelly. Thank you, Kelly. Thank you for all the hard work that went into the budget and to your office and everybody that contributed to this in district. We worked very hard to give our students the best education that they can have and do it as economically sound as possible. That's an amazing feat, so thank you. And the taxpayers, thank you too. Okay, does anyone have any questions, any concerns? Okay, so can I have a motion to approve the 2023-24 Byram Hills budget?
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you very much. Thank you for that hard work. Thank you, Kelly.
We'll stretch.
That's right, we're almost there.
Now, we are moving on to unfinished business. The policies, review of policies, 10.1.
So we'll take a look at this policy. We'll go a little deeper into this policy and take a little time, so I want to make sure that the board has a good awareness of it and is able to ask any questions. It's an important policy. It's Policy 4531, Field Trips and Excursions. I want to thank the policy committee, Mia, Jason and Petri, Gina and Jen. This policy, we've taken a lot of time on and spent several policy committee meetings discussing. We've had some back and forth on it with our legal counsel. We wanted to make sure this was really vetted carefully. So Gina and I will talk about this, and if there's any questions or discussions about it, we're happy to share that with you. So first of all, I want to talk about the old policy had two sections, two main sections to it, which was our usual type of field trips that you think of during the year, and then non-sanctioned trips. It had those two categories. The new policy has those two categories, plus we added one on excursions. And excursions is going to refer to and be defined as trips that take place outside of the calendar year, which means July and August in the summertime. We'll go through the details of that. We also then added a section on safety and a section on medication. So those are new items in the policy. So the first part of the policy is an introduction to why field trips are really important. We think it's a great extension of the curriculum. So it's a great way to bring the classroom to new areas and give kids experiences that they can't get in the classroom. The last paragraph, the third paragraph of that first section, I just want to read that out loud. That's a new one which defines excursions. It says, "Unlike field trips, excursions provide opportunities for students to participate in trips occurring outside of the school calendar year. Excursions are not required for any course, but provide opportunities for outside of the school year for enrichment." So on field trips, I'll go through that section first. Those are our usual type of field trips that we think of that our kids take. They take place during the calendar year. The second bullet talks about the process. The building principals must approve all field trips. So they're done, you know, they're presented by teachers and then principals approve it. We also have the section that field trips that take place during the regular school hour, students are required to attend. But if they can't, there would be an alternative assignment if a student has to stay in the building for any reason. We define field trips that occur during the day, which would be the type of trips to a museum, to the Hudson River, those types of trips. And we sometimes have overnight trips. That would be like, we have some students going to ISEF for the Regeneron competition right now. And our DC trip or Boston trip, our NISM competitions, those are overnight trips. Those you'll be familiar with because we always put that approval. I talk about it in my packet, and you've seen those approval forms that are submitted. Jen reviews those forms and signs off on them and makes a recommendation to you. So that's the overnight trips. So that sort of defines our typical school trips that take place during the school year. The next section would be excursions. This is the new section that we want to add. And so we had a presentation back in January. You'll recall Melissa came and talked about the benefit of our students that we can offer our students if we do these trips in the summer. Sometimes we may want to do things that don't disrupt the normal day. They're not directly related to a course, but they are extensions of our mission statement. We're providing students with opportunities to engage in learning that might be very unique. So for example, the tour company we've been looking at has trips around, they have your cultural type of trip, but they also have trips on STEM. They have leadership trips. So there's other types of activities that we could engage kids in that really enrich their learning in the summertime. So we think these would be types of trips that really do extend to the mission of our district. And we think that'd be really advantageous to our students to have opportunities for that. So these are trips that take place outside of the school calendar, the typical school calendar, so it's the summertime trips. When I go through the other bullets, the superintendent will be required to inform the board of an excursion 12 months in advance. The principal would approve it 18 months in advance. So there's a long timeline, because that's part of the requirements of these tour companies. You have to do a lot of advanced planning for these international trips. So that's why there is a long timeline, but it gives us a chance to really think about the trip, and you would be notified 12 months in advance. The next section talks about chaperones. There is a really tight chaperone requirement. Make sure that there is at least one adult for every 10 students. We would also have a district tour coordinator. That would be part of that tour as well. So additional adult would be part of it, and the tour coordinator is going to do all the management and organizing of these trips. They take a lot of planning. And then you'll see the bullets there where it lists the responsibilities around completing medical release forms, the approval in terms of departure, making sure all the students have their paperwork together. They would be looking at monitoring the location where they're traveling and make sure there's not any safety warnings or travel restrictions to those countries or places of travel. And they would be in constant contact with the district office, with the superintendent about the safety notifications. There are websites, you know, Department of Homeland Security, and you have state, and the state has websites where they give any travel restrictions that are taking place.
On that, I just have one question there, which, I mean, that all makes total sense. But do you think that either those warnings, if they do come up in these days, there are warnings on a lot of countries? Should they also be communicated to parents, guardians? Or should there be something on the form that we have that a parent would use to fill out permission for their kid to go? Like disclosure, or look at the State Department website or these websites for warnings, one way or the other, just to make sure?
I think you should say that, a more general statement.
Actually, I was at one of the principal's coffees where Melissa Stahl spoke to this and said that the company is very reputable, and they look at all of this. They look at what's going on politically in countries in terms of...
They will often cancel it.
They often, they cancel, they work around it. They redo a trip, redo an itinerary, and everybody's informed before they go.
These tour companies are monitoring all that. We would too. And it would be in conjunction with the tour companies to make sure.
I do like that language, though, because then it absolves us from... Not that I want to be absolved.
We just want people to have full information and not even know where to look. But I mean, a country that you don't even think about. I was just looking the other day. Chile, Costa Rica, some of these countries do have warnings. Mexico, clearly.
So I think what we're going to put together, and it's in a later paragraph, or might be in this paragraph, where we would put together, we're going to put together a guidance document for all the field trips on the process.
So should this say in the policy, though, that parents are encouraged to check the warnings and the status of travel to different countries to make decisions about? I don't know, because then, let's just say something happened.
I think you have to talk to legal about it. I think we have to go back to legal and ask that question.
But do you want it in there anyway? Or should we ask them anyway?
I think you, I mean, we would want that in there, but I think you would ask how, what, you know?
How to word it?
How to word it. If you're working with, we're specifically working with one company in terms of these trips, so how does that work?
And they're great, and you're great. It's going to be on the form.
Could be other ones, right?
This one's amazing.
Rebecca just got back from a Spain trip with this company last week, and they were incredible. I mean, they were so organized and really, like, they informed us of everything. Any COVID restrictions in the countries we were traveling to was really very, very...
Their communication was good.
Excellent, excellent.
It's good to know.
Do families sign something with the district? Or is it just with the travel company? Or is it both? Do you know? Were you not, not on that part yet?
We would contract with the travel company, I believe.
And then they would, they would contract with them?
They would have some paperwork that's required. If you filled that out, we would fill out that.
That's been our question all along. We're just, I understand that these trips have run, you know, for years with staff from Byram, and it's not an affiliated Byram, you know, it's not a trip affiliate. But so now, how is that changing? You know, and if these trips are still going to run separately, but it's a Byram, you know, employed educator?
This is one of the plans, unsanctioned trips.
Right. And so I just want to understand how that's different. And, you know, is it sort of grandfathered in now? Because we're putting this policy, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I think that those trips can and will continue to run. I just don't think as a district, we want to be scheduling trips that are occurring during the school year with give-backs of snow days or in the event of issues happening. You know, we had somebody, a chaperone, who was there with a student who had COVID, right? And then this extends on. This isn't something that we feel comfortable inserting into the school year for our kids. And also, the types of trips that we're going to go on are going to be things that kids typically won't be doing in this, like the steam trip in Japan. That's not something that...
Leadership.
Leadership trips, right? So there may be some that are, you know, going to a few different countries in Europe eventually. It's going to be much different than just like, not just, but going to one country for doing that, yeah.
So we still maintain the non-sanctioned trips?
Right.
And we have the requirements around that?
Yeah.
So we feel like this is just an addition to it, adding this other piece? Because we feel like there's the opportunity to do these other type of curricularly related trips that really are around leadership, service, or STEM? And then who knows what else may occur?
Can really enhance the curriculum.
Mostly, right?
So I will check on that one statement and think about wording on that.
I guess like, that document that would get signed by the family as it relates to Byram Hills, like, that's an important document. To really just make sure that we're just being really clear about where our line of responsibility is, where the family's line is, what we're not liable for, what they're liable, just to be really clear on all those. That would make it much better.
Absolutely.
Perhaps have the...
Can we have the tour group, whoever it may be, their documentation reviewed by legal?
Sure.
Oh, yeah, we have.
Certainly would do that. Before we sign their, we'd sign their contract, we would certainly review it. We will have Kelly review it, just from the business side of things. And then also, Kelly would give it to probably our insurance company as well and to our legal counsel.
And just to say again, we would encourage any, you know, parents with questions or concerns to speak. Is it Melissa they would speak to, or?
They could.
Yeah, reach out, because she was so, spoke so well and answered so many questions, so.
Melissa's participated in a lot of travel of this type, and she has a daughter going on a trip in another district with the same tour company. And she's, Melissa's very particular about these types of things. Definitely safety is important and communications is important to Melissa. And she seems really, feels comfortable with this particular tour group.
We appreciate the policy committee taking the time to delve into this.
It's been a lot of, a lot of detail.
It's a big change for the district, right? But it is a good change.
Yeah, it is. So then we have our non-sanctioned trips section as well. We did tweak some of the language in there and added some language. We put in that statement in that first bullet that school employees cannot sign as a representative of the district. These are trips that take place outside of the district. They cannot take place on school grounds. You can't have meetings on school property. You can't use Byram Hills letterhead, for example. These have to be completely disassociated with the district. And we've been doing these for many years, and the teachers who have run these know the requirements. We'll certainly share this policy with everybody again once we, should you approve it. We'll make sure that they know the new language that has been put into this policy. There was one other new, that last bullet under the non-sanctioned trips, it talks about insurance coverage. We put that in that. The district is not providing insurance coverage for non-sanctioned trips. And that was a recommendation of our legal counsel, just to be very explicit. We've never had issues in our district, but our legal counsel said that in other districts that's come up as an issue, and she recommends putting it into the policy.
The district's not, yeah. Okay, so, oh, she's looked over this stuff already?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, it's great.
A few times. It's gone back and forth a few times. Then trips, trip expenses. We added that section in there, just clarifying the expenses. or we made some, actually, it was in there, we made some changes to some of the language under trip expenses, and then the new sections are safety and medication. We put in a statement about safety to maximize state safety on excursions and trips, and then medications. With medications, when students go on field trips that are taking place during the school day, students are not allowed to take their own medication, and if a student has to take medication, we would send a nurse on that trip as well. On excursions, we're not able to send a nurse, that would be costly, so students would have to be able to take their own medications themselves.
Unlike the doctors stating that this child is.
Right, and all that would be, there's paperwork that would go along with all of that, we would vet all that, and that's part of the district coordinator overseeing that process. So that's just a distinction in that section between those two, field trips and excursions. Some of that, but we wanted to take our time, Gina.
Yeah, no.
Did I cover, okay.
Actually, he does go to the DC on the district.
Yeah, but those are district sanctioned trips.
It's a non-sanctioned.
Oh, this is for the excursion.
Excursions, we would not do that.
Any questions from anybody, comments? It's very exciting, and we're very pleased about it, and I, you know, thank you for this thorough and methodical look at everything, and, you know, maybe just have legal look over what we asked, and Scott's question, and that would be great.
And I'll bring that back at the.
Thank you so much.
The next meeting for the second read, right?
Yeah, so can I have a motion to approve the first read of four or five three-one field trips and excursions?
Second.
The second.
Second.
All those in favor? Okay, I'm going to go backwards.
It's the policy.
Now, thank you to the policy committee, yes, everybody, for all the work done on that. To the, we're just going to go backwards a moment to the, where is it? Resolution, to 9.5, the resolution for adoption of proposed 2023-24 budget and property tax report card. I've been told that I was remiss, I have to read, I'm reading this entire thing, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and then am I asking for a motion after again?
Yes.
Okay. So bear with me for a moment, we are going to read, okay. I'm going to ask for an adoption of the following resolution. Whereas the Board of Education has received and carefully reviewed a proposed 2023-24 school budget from the Superintendent of Schools, and whereas the Board of Education has held several budget hearings regarding the proposed 2023-24 school budget, and whereas the Board of Education concurs with the administration's recommendation on the contingency budget information to be presented on the school district budget notice regarding the 2023-24 school budget. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Byram Hills Central School District adopts the proposed 2023-24 school budget in the amount of 99,725,037 to present to the voters at the annual meeting on May 16, 2023, and approves the following proposition. Proposition one, shall the Board of Education of the Byram Hills Central School District be authorized to expend for budgetary purposes in the school year 2023-24 the sum of 99,725, zero, and 37, and to levy the necessary tax therefore upon the taxable property of the school district? Be it further resolved that the property tax report card and the school district budget notice are hereby approved by the Board of Education for submission to the State Education Department and dissemination to the public in accordance with the law. May I have a motion? And a second?
Second.
And all those in favor? Okay, thank you so much.
And also important to remember that there are two propositions.
Yes.
That are on this vote. One, proposition one is for two Board of Education trustees. To date, we have two ballots that have been submitted for those seats. They happen to be sitting around this table, thank you very much. And proposition number two, it will be the budget, and you will see that on the budget brochure when it comes out, and we will have it in our slides moving forward.
And we did indeed do the budget steps, that Laura usually reads them, but we did them earlier.
We did that, we're good.
Okay, excellent. Thank you, everybody, thank you for bearing with me. Thank you, Scott, for pointing that out.
11.2.
Okay, yep, 11.1, adoption of the Southern Westchester BOCES 2023-24 administrative budget and election of trustees for the 2023-24 school year.
Yeah, that's 11.2, and Kelly, you want to talk about the BOCES budget at all? I think that the board has all had a chance to review it. Does anybody have any questions about it?
I had some questions, but now they're all answered. I think I just wanted to make sure that the budget increase was not 5.24% of the overall budget increase for BOCES, which it was not, it was a much lower number. So more in tandem with the budget increases that we've seen here at Byram Hills, within reason.
Yeah.
Don't just say that.
Uh huh. Should read the resolution.
Correct.
Resolution.
For the BOCES budget?
You can, yeah.
Yeah.
Is it just this here?
The top, the first page?
Yeah.
Yeah, you can just read the top. At the meeting.
At the meeting of the Byram Hills, so any other questions about it, concerns? Okay. At the meeting of the Byram Hills Central School District Board of Education held on Tuesday, April 18, 2023, somebody has to approve this budget? Oh, I moved, right? Okay, who's second?
Second.
Second. So Lara moved, Mia's second, that the 2023-24 estimated administrative budget for the Southern Westchester Board of Cooperative Educational Services in the amount of 12,812,124 be approved. Everybody, all those in favor? And then we have one abstention of this, Laura's not here, or not abstention, sorry. Okay?
Just one little, there should be like a comma after the.
Yeah, it's a period.
You see that?
Yeah, I told them, but.
Okay.
Or we could approve $12,812.
So does Kelly need to say that?
Something.
Thank you. Do we have to do anything else, or that's that? No? Okay, great, thank you. Okay, and we'll move on to staff reports.
All right, superintendent report.
Thank you.
First, you see on, in front of you, you're invited to join us for the Byram Hills High School Awards Ceremony on Wednesday, May 31st.
Oh, wait, I need to do this, but I think we have to do the same thing for Cheryl Brady?
That's right, yeah.
Oh, right.
Oh, there's three.
There's three candidates, and there's three spots, so.
Or do we just do it together?
Can I do them together? Okay. Oh, sorry, everybody, we're going to go back.
Yeah.
That's right. So where are the three names?
So it's Eileen Miller, Cheryl Brady, and Nylash Jane.
Give me a second. Who was the first one?
Cheryl Brady.
Cheryl Brady.
Eileen Miller.
Okay.
And Nylash Jane.
And Nylash Jane, okay. Let's start off first. Sorry, everybody. Okay. So at the meeting of the Byram Hills Central School District Board of Education held on Tuesday, April 18, 2023, Lara Sangle moved, second by, somebody second?
I'll second.
Thank you. That one vote be cast for Cheryl Brady, Eileen Miller, and Nylash Jane to serve as trustees on the Southern Westchester Board of Cooperative Educational Services for the time period of July 1, 2023 through June 30, 2026. The vote on the above resolution was as follows, all those in favor? So guests, we have six of us, and then Laura is not here. Okay, thank you. Sorry, go ahead.
And that's it.
That's it. Is that it? There was something, Kelly, you could have said there, but you don't have to do it.
No.
All right, so first, we do have, let's do this again.
Okay.
We, you're cordially invited to join us for the Byram Hills High School Awards Ceremony on Wednesday, May 31st. I can't believe that we're talking about something happening on May 31st already. I feel like this year flew in the theater, so just an invitation to the Board of Education members and to parents in our community, we will be invited, that will be awesome. First, I want to do just a little summary of the Byram Hills Media and Communications Center. We, a year, a number of years ago, about five years ago, remember when we decided that we were sort of farming everything out to 15 different people, and we didn't have any platform coherence, and we didn't have, you know, at that time, we didn't even quite have our colors correct, and we didn't have our fonts correct, and everything like that. Brian Melso and his team have just done an absolutely spectacular job, each year taking on more and more responsibilities. So I want to highlight some of the things that are happening for them this year. The media content, 139,000 plus current views across our platforms.
Wow.
It is. We're on par to each 150 videos or more produced this school year, so think about it, curriculum, athletic showcases, ceremonies, principals' coffees, musicals, concerts, the board meetings, graduation, interpersonal communications. And, you know, even some of it that you see down here, that I've been showing you for student highlights all of this time, the chorus, Tuda winning the Bobcat of the Season, the parent orientations, just really quite a bit. 50% or more social media growth across the platforms from 2021-22. And take a look at the number of interactions and reaches that we've had, likes, shares, views, and impressions, pretty amazing. And just thinking about, all of these are set up by Brian Melso and Gabby in the, in the media center, they're doing this writing, they're putting out these posts, this is coming from them, and a lot of thanks also to Brett Alcantara in athletics, because he really supplies a lot of the athletics content, if not all, to Brian to get this work done, they work really collaboratively well together. Over 100 district photo sessions, now photo sessions could involve, you know, hundreds of photos that are being taken of kids at a time for use on social media and our calendar. That calendar is now being put together also by Brian Melso, as is all of our press releases, the website, the Spectrum, which looks fantastic, better than it ever has.
Yep.
Is also coming from, yeah. Thanks, because it was.
It's weird.
I was like.
I'm watching.
No, because, yeah, because I know that's Mick, and he doesn't look like that at all. All right, also, website administration for us, updating and organizing, whether it's a snow day, or it's a game change, or whatever it is, Brian is doing those updates constantly and sending us notifications. I mean, he doesn't have to be asked, he's following, he's always there, he's always watching, he's watching right now, thank you, Brian.
That was a good thing, right?
It's a good thing, it's so good. So continual updates and organization for more communicative multimedia-rich website, I mean, I think our website also has taken great form. And take a look at Focus and the Spectrum. I mean, the Focus used to be like this little black and white newsletter type thing, and it's really evolved into something wonderful, and the Spectrum that goes out to our school community also. 60-plus press releases, the Focus Spectrum Calendar, just amazing. Marketing and media clubs at both HCC and Byram Hills High School, so getting kids really involved in this now. And I had a student, who I talk about all the time, but he's interested in sports casting, and he said, he does some work with Brian Melso, and he said, yeah, you know, I'm going to go talk to him about like, maybe setting up a mentor program, where we can maybe mentor some of the younger students to do it, the fact that a student in our schools has an opportunity with Brian Melso, and then also feels like, we should just be doing this mentor program so we could get some, some new students who get involved in this, because one day I'll graduate, right? Pretty amazing, all of it.
Is that what Five Minute Farm is?
Yes, yeah. So SDL at HCC and the guest presentations at Byram Hills High School as well, and just, as I said, collaborating with students, guest presentations, productions, et cetera. And that's it. So a special thanks to the Media and Communications Center and Brian Melso at the helm, just doing absolutely extraordinary job, so thank you for being with us. And the last part, student highlights, so super fun, well, fun, but fun because it's creativity, right? So we had kids who were using art to promote human rights. This was women's rights, and over the past two months, these were the kids in Global Scholars One, and what they did is they had a whole display outside in the hallways at the high school near the library, sort of challenged to take action on human rights abuses against women, so they did all these different creative artwork pieces that were in the hallway and were.
It was part of a week-long.
Yeah.
Promotion for.
And this is pretty amazing, just, I mean, the energy that these kids put into this, the research that they do behind this to figure out what it is that they want to share with the rest of the community. The AP Art Show, pretty amazing, you're invited from 8 to 2:30, it's going to be this Thursday and Friday, and then there's also going to be a 7 to 8:30 PM on April 19th, so come and celebrate our young artists, and we're going to take just a second to look at this video.
Sound might come through my computer, but we'll see.
Look how beautiful. And this is what you get when you have your own media and communication center, right?
That's right.
Yeah, awesome job, Brian, thank you. Oh, I did that? No. And that's it, gold Bobcats. Thank you, Chris Walsh.
Yay. Okay, Tim?
Sure.
Yeah.
Let me get to that. All right, so I want to just report on the literacy study group, and I first want to thank Lara and Melissa for your time. We had five, well, I'll give you all the details in a moment, but we just had our last meeting last night of the year of the literacy study group. So I just want to review the purpose of it, so we recognize that literacy is important, and it's been in the media a lot over the past year or so, so we wanted to approach it in the Byram Hills way, which is to go slow and methodical and deepen our own understanding and learning before we make any major decisions about our literacy curriculum. And it's all part of my regular review process. We'd started looking at our K5 literacy curriculum in 2018, and then, of course, we got interrupted in 2020. So we were picking that work up naturally, but then we decided to put the study group together last year when we were learning of all the media frenzy around literacy, and we wanted to just say, let's study what's going out there, so we're not just being informed by media representations of literacy. So it's all in the spirit of continuous improvement and improving our literacy program for all students. So we worked with two expert researchers in literacy, they're both researchers and practitioners who were amazing and really had deep, deep knowledge about literacy. We had five evening meetings as a committee, the committee was comprised of teachers, administrators, and parents, and our two board members, Melissa and Lara, joined us. And then we hosted four additional public meetings, because we limited the number of people who could attend study groups to make it manageable, there were still like, I think, 30-some members of our study group. We wanted to have some public meetings, so we had four additional public meetings throughout the year. And I have all of our resources, every slide presentation from our study group, and all of the articles that were shared with us that we reviewed are on our website, the district website, and you can scan that QR code to take you directly to the website. All that information is up there, there's some amazing resources on the research behind reading. So some examples of actions that we've taken to date is that we have trained all of our K5 special education teachers and some of our reading specialists on the Orton-Gillingham approach, which is a multi-century approach to teaching reading. We trained our teachers and trained all new teachers and retrained many of our teachers on the foundations, which is our phonics curriculum at K through third grade. And we also are offering a really wide array of additional literacy professional learning opportunities this summer and into next school year, including offering advanced courses in the Orton-Gillingham for special education teachers, and the opportunity for them to go through the practicum where they would actually be certified Orton-Gillingham teachers. That's a pretty extensive process that involves an eight-month process of every week having to implement Orton-Gillingham lessons and videotaping yourself and submitting those to your mentor who reviews them and gives you feedback. But we have a lot of teachers who are interested in doing that, because they're really energized by what they're learning. And I'm in the process of developing a three-to-five-year literacy plan that will have specific goals related to student outcomes and literacy based on our learning, so that will be a process I'm working with the K5 principals and our special education director, assistant director of special services, and then also engaging our faculty, all of our faculty in this discussion around the planning of those goals, so that we're starting to involve everybody and all of our teachers involved in that. This is just some of the topics we covered, I won't go through all of this, but we looked at all the developmental stages of reading and a lot of the research behind reading, and some very detailed topics, and it was a bit fascinating, deep dive into how students learn, and I can't speak for the families, but many of them who told me, and Melissa and Lara can certainly say, the general feeling is that the realization of how complicated it is to teach reading, that there's so many aspects to it that a teacher has to think about on a daily basis when they're teaching reading, and it's, it's a very detailed process. So some of our next steps as a district, I'm sort of putting a statement there about how we'll review our literacy curriculum, instruction, and assessment practices, and look at our work as we continually revise our program. Specifically, I would be putting together our takeaways from the study group, we did a session last night where I asked people to contribute what they learned, so I'll be sharing that with you soon at a future board meeting, and then we'll be taking that information as we have conversations with all of our K5 teachers about what we learned, so that we can then pick up from that point with our conversations. Some of the areas we're looking at, focusing on that have come up through our literacy study, this is not fleshed out in terms of goals document yet, but it's some of the areas we're looking about, looking at, it's just looking at that alignment in our curriculum within grade levels and across grade levels, vertical alignment of our scope and sequence, looking and evaluating our use of research-based strategies, conducting an assessment on it, which means what are all the assessments we're using to assess students' reading and making sure that it's very streamlined, and we're looking at research-based strategies that, assessments that align with the intervention strategies we have in place, looking to make sure we have high-quality text in the classroom, examining the role of content knowledge or background knowledge, which the research indicates is really important to students' reading success and comprehension as they get older, and making sure we're aligned in our general education curriculum with the special education program as well, and looking at our MTSs plan, that's, we used to call it Response Intervention, RTI, it's now Multi-Tier System of Supports, and that we have a very clear process that's objective, that triggers when a student needs interventions. And then, of course, looking at our, the continuity of the K5 curriculum with the 612 curriculum, and I'm thankful to Dwayne Smith, who was part of the literacy study as well, so we'll have that conversation with him, what he learned from this that he can then take to his 612 department work. And again, I want to thank Lara, Melissa, and all the parents, we had amazing parents that joined us, I think our teachers who joined us, and the administrators who've joined us, in addition to Dwayne, we had Peggy, Dave, and Kim Sacco, who were part of that as well. And these are some of our students' reading. And these are some of our students' reading.
There's Blake. She's reading, she's reading, that's the second graders reading to the kindergarten.
Yes. Reading buddies, Dave. So thank you so much for the time. We've learned so much and we're constantly thinking about what we've learned and how that applies going forward.
Thank you so much, Tim. Thank you for putting this together. It was a great effort and.
It was really amazing. I mean, the research is amazing. We really enjoyed it. It was really challenging, but interesting and intriguing.
Yes.
Speakers brought so much, I felt like to us, so much, such a wealth of research, knowledge, and just great stuff that we can really apply to our looking at the curriculum.
Yeah. I thought the last meeting was, last night was mine. It was really great.
I agree.
Really, really great. We were looking at, you know, struggling students and specifically looking at dyslexia. It was really interesting, the research behind dyslexia.
Tim, just in terms, so much that you've learned and so much that you all have done to get us to this point, which is, it's all very impressive and thoughtful. In the Janet classes next year, so if you're a second-grade classroom, will, will there be, I guess, changes from kind of what we've been doing the last few years? Or is it going to be a little bit of a longer process of sort of setting goals over time? And people shouldn't expect necessarily next year that there's some massive change, but it's incremental? Just to kind of figure out where, where we are on that spectrum in terms of the expectation.
So as you know, with, some things are really, take a lot of time in, in education that changes. But there are, what we're going to do in our goals is look at very discrete outcomes. And some things are really high leverage. For example, in learning, we've talked a lot about the types of textbooks that should be in classrooms. There's things called decodable texts, there's things called level books, grade-level books. There's a lot of different language around textbooks. And when we did a quick analysis, we learned about it. So I go back to my reading specialist and say, what type of books do we have in our classrooms? And learning that, we need more of certain types of books in our classrooms that we don't have. That's something we're working on right now. So by next year, we will have more of the types of textbooks that are research-based and that will help teachers be able to meet kids' needs. They could be things like decodable texts, which means you're learning a particular word pattern in phonics, so you're going to read some books to get some repeated exposure. But then also making sure you have texts that are at grade level or above grade level so teachers have quick access to an array of high-interest books for kids that can meet them at the various stages of their learning that they're at. That's something that will occur immediately. There'll be some other things probably in place by next year. For example, in our MTSS plan, what was pointed out to us by one of our researchers is it's a little bit vague in terms of the decision-making process for how we put kids into level tier two or tier three intervention. She says, you need to be much more objective with clear-cut scores on your screeners. And that was just an aha. Now, my, our MTSS plan is due for revision and it's been on my list since the pandemic to review. So it's now right on my desk, literally, with notes from our researcher on the things to change. She actually printed it out and gave me a copy with all her notes. So she assessed me. It was a real performance assessment. And one thing is with cut scores. So we do have the universal screener that we've been using since the pandemic, which is iReady, that you're familiar with. I presented iReady data. And we aren't using their cut scores right now. So I just wrote to iReady and said, can I meet with you and a statistician so that we can look at your norming and look at how we can norm it to our students? Because it's on national norms and I wanted just to make sure that it's rigorous enough for Barham Hills norms. So that's an example of something that could change by next year. Other things are going to take more time. You know, when we're looking at.
Well, incrementally, the Orton-Gillingham training, all of our special educators and reading specialists.
So we're looking at a scope.
That's still happening.
Yes. And there's strategies they're putting into place right away. Kim Sapon, our Assistant Director of Special Services, is so excited as she walks by classrooms all the time and sees teachers utilizing what they've learned just from this fall when they trained at Orton-Gillingham. But she's putting together a scope and sequence for the special classes so that we're all being consistent and there's alignment from year to year with, with students. That's something that's, may take a couple of years to get there, but it's in the works already. So this wasn't like we did the five sessions, now we're just going to sit back and think about it for a while. We've been learning at every session and I immediately go and start talking to people. Things are starting to pull up in terms of our priorities. We just have to map out like a plan for those priorities. So there will be things that occur immediately and then other things are just going to take a little more time.
And the teachers that are going on to the additional certification.
Yep.
The weekly sessions that they have to video tape, that are going to be in their classrooms. So they're going to be implementing.
Exactly.
In their classrooms.
Yeah, exactly. So that's something that will be occurring right now. There's been just a lot of interest around it. We're going to be focusing on literacy at all aspects K-5 for the next few years. I'm excited about it. And there'll be some challenges. There's definitely going to be. Because one thing was a realization for me, when you read the press in, in the media about what's happening with literacy and you think about the changes over time in the last three decades philosophically, you know, going from phonics to whole language and then to balanced literacy. We'll get into the details of that, but if you've read, if you've been reading about it, you sort of have a general sense of those different shifts. That spanned several decades and we have teachers who span three decades of coming out of teacher training with possibly three, you know, fairly different mindsets or points of view or background training on literacy. And then a lot of nuance in between, right? So that, to, to sort of unpack people's training from decades ago takes time. And then reconciling that with, well, I've been using this and I've seen kids be successful. So how do we have those conversations in ways that honor teachers' experience with kids, yet also just sort of recognizes there is a body of research that we want to look at and compare and start making some adjustments? So those types of things might take a little bit of time. But we do span several decades of philosophical approaches that we have to think about.
So, Tim, brace yourself for my compliment. So, so if, if literacy were a pool of water, Tim went off the highest diving board. And lunged headfirst and said, we are going to take this by the horns. And, and I have to commend you for that and the way you do everything you do. Arguably, we had two of the best experts in the field who came. It was your idea, you know, our massive texting, as you reminded me, right? And, and thinking overnight and everything. And the next day, you're coming in and saying, I think I need to have a literacy study. I think that's what we need to do. We need to slow down. We need to bring in experts. We need to share ideas with our teachers, our administrators, people in the community. We need to figure out how these professionals can then come into our buildings and help us, which will be later parts of this plan of looking at assessments we have and sort of consulting with us about that. But you, everything that you did, the way you included people in the community, included teachers, administrators, board members on that, and found exactly the right people and then turned it around to another five-year plan of, well, this is how we're going to roll it out. And you know, and I, I'm an English major. I know a lot about literature. I did not know a lot about teaching of reading. And we look at all of the facets of, you know, it's decoding and the encoding and the, you know, comprehension. I mean, there are like six different, five or six different areas that you really have to pay attention to in detail. And when you're using this program, when you have a consonant, Gina and I were talking about today, a consonant, a vowel, and a consonant, and the kids can't make that, that sort of blend and figure out what that is. And, you know, all of the mapping that they have to do when they see ON and in their mind, this orthographic mapping that takes place so that they know that means on, right? Like where is that all happening? You brought that to the forefront for everyone. I think that there were educators in the room who've been educators for 30 years and are phenomenal, and they learned and they embrace that and move forward, always in a non-threatening way, that we're just learners.
Yeah.
So you have that je ne sais quoi, I don't know how. But really, the amount of time and energy you spent in putting this together so thoughtfully is exactly what makes Barham Hills where it is.
It was so thorough. It was just so thorough. Every corner, I feel like, of literacy was covered.
And it's not over. And that's great. Whereas other people might have said, you know, I don't really need to do this work right now.
I feel like we're at the beginning.
We're at the beginning.
I'm about to start doing the work.
I also feel like a lot of, you know, I think people, when they hear that we're slowing things down and researching and doing studies, they think that sort of everything's come to a stop and we're just talking and learning. But that's not what's been going on. There is stuff that is being implemented and has been implemented all year long that's happening. There is stuff happening. We haven't just sat and talked for a year.
A lot has been happening, yeah.
Yeah. For example, I mean, since this whole thing began and all of our discussions about literacy and looking at the kindergarten kids, Tim helped to support kindergarten with a consultant who's out of Bosse's, who's a reading specialist, who's brought Eggerdy to another.
It's, yeah. So Eggerdy, yeah. It's another program that's an oral language development, which takes about five or 10 minutes a class that supports our phonics program. What we've learned in kindergarten, what teachers were really noticing with kids is coming out of the pandemic, these kids didn't have quite the oral language development that kids in the past have had, which makes sense, kids sitting at home and not interacting as much. So the oral language development was lower. There's a real strong connection between oral language and then students' ability to start learning phonics and reading and decoding. So we were bringing in this program, which is about a five or 10-minute dose a day that complements the, the phonics program. So we're evaluating that. It was like a quick sort of pilot for a month or two.
We got a chance to watch, to reserve the class, which was really interesting because there was stuff that she was doing that was physical.
Multisensory is the term.
They touched their heads and they put it in their brains. Like it was really interesting how they.
And that's the research behind multisensory approach. And that's when we did our site-based team and we had two teachers come and talk about the Foundations Program. We do things like they call skywriting, where you have kids make the letters with their hands. And part of that is again, helping the orthographic mapping, which is connecting three parts of the brain so that it connects it for students into their memory. Really interesting stuff with science. And what we learned last night around dyslexia was really phenomenal, eye-opening to us.
Yeah.
And that will probably take us a little bit of time to unpack because it's not so clear how to assess it and what to do, what we've learned from the research. There's not a test for dyslexia. And it tends to come out and be noticed later because kids can mask it. That's another thing we learned. So it's really fascinating. We had a really rich conversation around that with one of our researchers who knew so much about it.
And kind of had markers that, that she thought were indicative of it that we could look for when kids are younger.
So that's something we are going to spend some time having to think about, our approach to that. So we can catch some of these things early because we think that it could be the cause of some kids who struggle later in the middle school or upper grades, where maybe it could be that we're not catching dyslexic students. It's easy to mask, it's easy to cover up because there isn't a test for it. And kids who have strong oral language proficiency can disguise. And then sometimes it comes out behaviorally.
And they're typically very bright.
Typically bright.
So that's the other mask.
Right. Yeah. So it comes out when, when it starts becoming more content-heavy learning and kids have to rely on reading a science book or reading a social studies text. And that's when you start seeing kids, my kid was always really bright and now they're struggling. Why is that? That's not the indicator. There's a lot of different red flags, but sometimes it could be one of those readings as a kid has a reading issue. It just makes your heart go out to these kids and it's like, we just want to do more for our kids, right? And that was sort of our message at the end is we want all kids to succeed and have the best opportunity.
But thank you also for including the parents and involving them because I think that's not necessarily the way every district would have gone. And this has been in the news lately and there was a lot of questions and concerns and people wanting, you know, parents were asking. And you welcomed them in and said, let's be part, you know, be part of this conversation. And I think that was.
Unfortunately, it wasn't everyone. I don't think we just couldn't accommodate them.
But we opened it up to the public sessions. You accommodated whoever wanted to come. And I mean, this is the, the Barham way, right? And the discussion is still going on and we're going to keep looking.
And we could be here real late, sorry.
But as always, we always end up having this conversation with you, Tim, that, that no matter what the topic, what the discussion is, you're, it's always the same theme that you're, we're always, you know, teaching to the child, we're always researching, we're always doing a deep dive and it's, it's you navigating that constantly. You know, that's the constant thing here. So we, we can't thank you enough for all the effort.
Thanks for your support to do it.
Awesome.
I appreciate it.
And Mia, to your point, we also have a reading specialist that we're hiring. Remember, we added that additional position. So we'll have one for kindergarten first and second. So there are a lot of things happening.
Does Orton-Gillingham, when you go up to fifth grade, is, is it primary or?
They go up, I mean, gradeward goes to eighth grade.
Yeah, it's generally types of strategies that, it's, it's not a curriculum, so it's just strategies that could be used with all kids. We did have two middle school special education teachers participate in that training as well.
That's right.[1701.44]